Good afternoon, and we thank each of you for joining us here this evening for our regular school board meeting, May 23rd, 2023, at 3:30 PM. Prior to our pledge of allegiance and our invocation, we're going to ask that we all stand and have a moment of silence in remembrance of another fallen educator, Mr. Hall, and just, just for a moment of silence. And then, Mr. Superintendent that made it, he will lead us in our pledge, and our invocation will be done by Pastor Ron Smith of First Baptist Church. In that order, let us stand for our moment of silence. Mr. Superintendent?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That way. Lord God, how grateful we are that we can be gathered here together with our friends, our neighbors, our citizens, Father, to conduct this meeting, Father. Lord God, we do thank you.
Thank you.
For Dr. Surancy, our superintendent, as he leads us, Father God, we just ask that you just bless him, Father.
Bless.
The Lord as well. We pray for Holly Pickens, Father, for David Buckles, Sandra Giliard.
Yes.
For Linda Wagner, for Phil Leary, and for each representative here that support their work, Father. For, Lord, they have stepped forward into this calling that you've placed upon them, Lord. I know that they feel the weight and the gravity of representing the citizenry of Putnam County, Father. So, Lord, I ask that you would give them your wisdom, a wisdom that can only come from you, Father God. Lord, I pray that you would give them a courage as they stand for what is right in your eyes. And, Lord, I pray that you would give them a peace, even as they have to make sometimes difficult decisions.
Yes.
But, Lord God, we'd ask in this room that there would be a spirit of unity and fidelity among us in this chamber today. I pray that we would do this in order that generations behind us would be edified, that boys and girls would be raised up to be men and women of character, honor, and intellect, Father God, that they would become citizens who are blessing to you, to this great county, Father, to this great state, and to this great nation, but most of all, that they would change and enact positive change in their world.
Yes.
Lord, we ask you, because you are God if possible, and we ask all these things in the precious, powerful, mighty evangelist name of our Lord Jesus Christ, in all God's people's name.
Amen. Thank you so much for the round.
It is good to see the Superintendent.
Again, we do thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to come and share with us at this board meeting, and I'm sure it's not just because of us. There are some other reasons that have drawn you here. So, at this time, we're preparing for our presentations, the superintendents at Student Advisory Council with Superintendent Surancy, and Mrs. Ashley McCool, if you will come now, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, I'm very excited to be able to present to you today the team of students that have met throughout this year with Dr. Surancy. They were appointed by their administration at each of the respective junior and senior high schools. I have a feeling we won't have all of them here today because it is a super-busy week this week, as you know, with school activities, but I'm going to call each of their names. And, students, if you are here, please join us at the front, make a line so we can get a group photo. Once I've called all your names, I would ask Dr. Surancy to give a few words, if he could, about the importance of this group and what all they did for him and his work and our work as a district. So, we'll start from the students from Palatka Junior Senior High School. Sidney Bellamy. Beau Brown. Alexis Cruz. Jace Hall. Emma Hansford. It's a large group, guys, sorry about this. Jasmine Lopez Martinez. And Perla Lopez Martinez. Darius Givens. Timia Wiggins. And those are our students from Palatka Junior Senior High School. If you guys could stand, stay up here for the rest of the groups. Yeah. All right. From Interlochen Junior Senior High School, Jackson Barnes. He's here. Amaya McCray. Jasmine Smith. Alyssa Turner. And from Mellon Learning Center, Edgar Hernandez. Chris Thompson. Alyssa, she's Alyssa, yeah. Marcus Wilson. All right. From Crescent City Junior Senior High School, Emmy Delaney. Emmy's here. Janelle, Janelle Laura. I tend to always call her Laura Janelle, I've done that all year. Christian Lashane. Natalie Malfers. Mia Paul. Alicia Perez Lugo. Violetta Salazar. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Science, Gabe Bennett. Lisa Robinson. Keishon Harrison. From Putnam Virtual School, Isabella Craig. Natalie Hardy. Peyton Van Horn. And from QI Roberts Junior Senior High School, Lance Dollar. And last but not least, Leah Zabod. If we could give them a big round of applause.
If y'all will wait, I want to come get a picture, but I just want to take a moment and just congratulate all of you, and thank you for giving of your time to come meet with me at the CLO, I think, three or four times this year.
Four.
And I think once you got to know each other and got to know me and my staff, I think a lot of you really started opening up and telling us a lot more things than we probably wanted to hear.
[laughing]
Which is really good, and that is a student voice. You know, we want our students, because we're all about our students. And if we're doing things, we're making policies and rules that don't really line up with what they understand the purpose to be, then we need to go back and rethink that. And I think all our kids want to do, they want to follow rules, they want to do what's right, they want to be successful, they just want to understand the reason why, the purpose. And I think it's really opened my eyes a lot, and I just really appreciate the fact that I can hear from our most important constituents, and that's our students. So, let's give them another round of applause.
You get in the middle. Sandy, why don't you, Sandy, why don't you stand up back here?
I'll stand up.
Good, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
At this time. At this time, we will have Vice Star check presentation. Michael Rathden, Omega Milton, and Benita Lookadood, if you will come at this time, please.
Good afternoon, Board. I am pleased to present today our Vice Star partners that are here to present a check to Palatka High School.
Yes. Yes. Good afternoon, everyone, school board members. Dr. Surancy, it's good to see you again. So, for those of you who may not know, we started a partnership with Palatka High School and the Putnam County School District back in 2014, where we built a hands-on learning experience through the operation of a school credit union, which was built on campus. And so far, over the last nine years, we're going into our 10th year, we've offered 108 year-long paid internship opportunities to students from Palatka High School, and then approximately have paid out a little over $315,000 in compensation to those students for their participation in our program and working with Benita and Carlisha and our team at the Palatka branch. So, it's as hands-on as it can get, and we're honored to be here with you to share some exciting news as an extension of that partnership. So, again, thank you, school board members, for your support. Obviously, Dr. Surancy, thank you for your ongoing support. And to our school district folks, Mrs. Huff and your team, of course, thank you so much for your ongoing support. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Omega Milton.
Thank you, Michael. Hello, Board, how are y'all? And so, everyone, thank you so much for being here tonight. We're very excited to be here. I'm personally excited to be here because this is home for me. I was born and raised here in Putnam County. I'm a product of Putnam County, graduate from Palatka High School. I love to say 23 years ago, because I feel like I look pretty good for 40. [laughing] I'm not afraid to say it. So, 23 years ago, I, again, graduated from Palatka High School, so I'm very excited to be here. But all the thank yous Michael has already given, but we also want to thank Palatka High School for your continued support, for your partnership, because we can't do what we do without you. And so, thank you so much for always supporting us, Mr. Chairs. I know Mr. Stout is on his way out, kind of transitioning, but Mr. Stout, Ms. Oyster, she helped us with our interviews this year, jumping right in and helping out, so thank you all so much. And especially to our teacher, Mr. Andrew Moss, makes a huge difference to our program, so thank you all so much.
Now the check. A little bit about the program?
So, I'll give you a little bit about the check that we're about to give out. Glad to say, Palatka High School, we have 18 high schools across eight different counties that we actually support and have our branches in. Palatka High School was one of the top five earners of those high schools, so give Palatka High School a round of applause. So, let's talk about what they did, how they did it, and how you can get involved. How can you help Palatka High School out? So, again, this is an added layer. So, what it is called, we call it the debit card give-back program. It's an initiative that was started as a added layer to our partnership with Putnam County School District. It's an extension of our support for the Putnam County School District, our community that we serve here, and it's also an extension of us doing good. That's what we do here at Vice Star, that is, our purpose is to do good. And so, what we do, every high school that we have has a school-branded debit card. Mr. Moss wants to show his off, so we're going to allow him to do that. All right? Panther Nation, we love it. So, with that debit card, our community can help support Palatka High School. How do they do that? The same thing they do every day. If they get that school-branded card, they swipe for gas, they swipe for groceries. Five cents per transaction goes to that fund for Palatka High School, and we're going to cut them a check every year up to $10,000. Okay? And so, I know schools are always in need of money and support. Again, we have that side of things to support, you know, physically, but we also need the support of our communities to help our schools to grow and to develop our students, and sometimes money is one of those things that helps us do that. And so, again, that's the way that you give back. Talk to the community, talk to your friends, talk to everyone that you can. If they are already members of Vice Star, kudos to them, but ask them, change up that debit card, get Palatka High School on that card, because you're doing nothing different from your day-to-day. Okay? We'd love to have that support and be giving out an even bigger check for next year. I'll turn it over to Benita.
Well, do y'all want to say a few words? Or you?
No, we're good. Nothing. [laughing]
So, we have Ms. Benita Lookadood, who's our branch vice president of Palatka, and then Ms. Carlisha, Carlisha Smith, who is our assistant branch manager, who is also a graduate. And she was in our second year at high, second or third year.
Second or third, yeah.
At our, at our program at Palatka, so.
Yeah, so she is a product of the high school program. Now she works full-time for me.
Awesome. So, if we could, we'd like to have our administration from Palatka High School, our teacher, folks who care and take in, our students, too. We have a couple of students here. So, the check amount is for $2,462.80. This is for the first year of the high school debit card give-back program, so congratulations. How do we want to?
Want to do the whole?
I want the students in the middle. Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
She doesn't feel bad. She feels, she's feeling bad. Excellent.
Thank you, Omega. 23 years, huh? 23.
Still a baby. You're still a baby, Omega. And thanks to Vice Star and your representatives, it's because of people like you that our children excel and experience many things that would be virtually impossible for us to expose them to. And again, we say thank you. At this time, we have our CTE retirements by Mrs. Renee Huff.
Good afternoon, again. Today, I just wanted to, if I don't cry, I just wanted to recognize a couple of our CTE department members that are retiring. I'd like to bring Andrew Tyson up to the podium, please. Chef Tyson was our culinary arts teacher, and he retired in December. So, today, my team and I, my team [laughing] and I, my team would like to, would like to recognize Chef Tyson in recognition of your 32 years of service to the Putnam County School District. And career and technical education, your dedication and devotion to your trade and to teaching will not be forgotten. When I first started with career education 20-something years ago and got to meet Chef Tyson, I was amazed at what the culinary department did in, within the schools, not just at Interlochen, but also at Palatka. But I so enjoyed going to Interlochen, because that's my own school, and I enjoyed what they did out there. But now, I have to say, I'm so proud that you're retired and can do and travel and have a good time. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, don't leave yet.
You've got to cook something, you know?
His crab cakes and his brownies and his pasta salad and... Okay, so now I'd like to recognize Janet Jungenberg, Janet Cobble to all of us. I met her 20-something years ago when I came to career education, and she became a mentor and kind of taught me the ropes with Ms. Grace Smith. And so, now she has decided to retire and travel and enjoy her new husband and her new home. So, in recognition, Janet, of your 36 years of service to the Putnam County School District and career and technical education, your dedication and devotion to your trade and to teaching will not be forgotten.
And with Ms. Giliard, that's my one. Thought you were Surancy.
You guys have always been around, but what the hell would be without?
I know.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Part two.
Yes, yes.
Be nice to Grace.
Madam Chairman, while you're coming, I was just going to say, Ms. Jungenberg's got her hands full now, and so she needed to retire.
Can you imagine putting up a grade?
Oh, my goodness. Classmate and teammate of mine, sir.
Yeah. And we do thank you for your services, Ms. Janet Cobble Jungenberg. We thank you for your service, met you at Palatka High School and enjoyed working with you. And Chef Tyson, for the many summers he would feed us there at Interlochen High, waiting for school to start back. He would call us over for a meal, and so it's just been great, and we appreciate all that they have done for our district. Okay, that takes care of our presentations, and again, we thank each of you. At this time, we are now ready for our public comments, and we do have one that has been given to us. And the comment, the subject of gratitude of support from Hope Center, the Nehemiah Project, by Mrs. Melissa Ray. If you will please come at this time, state your name, your address, and we're listening.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Melissa Ray, 108 Barbara Lane, Palatka, Florida. I believe it was early August or September of last year, my husband and I and other board members for the Nehemiah Project stood before all of you, and unanimously voted the support of referring students to the Hope Center that were having issues in the public school system. And so, October 14th of last year, we officially had our ribbon cutting, we opened up the school, we began accepting students, and I stand before you today to thank you for your support in honor of both the Nehemiah Project, on behalf of the Hope Center, and a gentleman by the name of Demaris Lewis, who was able to receive his high school diploma today. And without this program, he would have had no opportunity to do so. So, he had been through three high schools this year. And so, coming to us, he is now going to First Coast Technical for his welding degree, and he actually has a future ahead of him. And so, we just wanted to thank you for your support in trusting us with students that were struggling in the public system, and let you know that there is good coming already benefiting us, and we're just grateful for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We do appreciate you coming back to say thank you. At this time, we are ready for our consent agenda. We are going to start with Mr. Phil Leary.
Oh, I thought you were going to start with Ms. Pickens. No, that's okay. No, no, no. I'm fine.
All righty.
I tell you, I have been aggravating the staff for about three days, but I really only had one question about H1.
H?
And just a quick comment about, I had a long conversation with Colonel Wells at the Sheriff's Department today about our youth resource officers and the contract that I guess will be approved in here shortly, and I'm real excited about what they're doing.
Thank you so much, sir. All right, Mrs. Wagner?
I have nothing to pull, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Buckles?
Just, I think we've already in the workshop, we discussed the E6 enough that I don't think it's necessary to pull unless somebody else wants to pull it, but I have nothing at this time. I feel real good about what we're looking at.
All right, Mrs. Pickens?
I also feel like that about E6, but I do, I believe that we have a very good understanding, but I think it would be worthy of us to have Mr. Bowling come out and just speak about it.
All right, during this.
I'll pull E6.
E6, just for him to give a brief synopsis sort of E6, Pickens. Okay? And we are going to be pulling item E7. We're just pulling it all together, not to be reconsidered as we get information on it, but we're pulling E7.
All right.
Per Superintendent.
Is that everybody?
E7. I think we have everyone, all right?
I'll make, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented by the superintendent, minus E6 and E7.
And H1.
And H1.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, H1.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda for tonight's meeting, with the exception of H1, E6, and E7. It was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Any discussion, further discussion? All right, hearing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Okay? H1?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I guess it's working. I just, I really, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to get with Ms. France, but I was just curious, what, what are they leasing the rooms for, Dr. Surancy?
That should be the adult ed.
Okay, adult ed. That's what I thought, but I just want to confirm that. Okay.
I'm sorry. Right, south and west end.
Okay, very good.
And they, of course, they do that here on the main campus.
Right. Got you. Okay, Madam Chairman, I'll move approval of H1.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item H1, and seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner. Any further questions? Hearing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Poses, none. Motion carries 5-0.
And Ms. Pickens, would you like the justification for the purchase of the land?
Um, yes.
Okay, and not developing on the intended or the original site, which is the Miller site?
I would say if you could include both.
Both. Okay, so let's start with Miller. The unoccupied Miller Middle School had been the destination for the new Crescent City Elementary School for quite some time, and the reasons for that was, number one, we owned the property, and we can't develop the existing Middleton Bernie site because it's too small. We can't do an occupied site build like we're doing at the junior/senior high school, it's just not big enough. It's an unoccupied site, has a great auditorium, a great gym, it's lakefront property, and we thought that it would make a really beautiful school, and I'm sure it would. But what's called for down in Crescent City is a very large school. It's over 1,100 student stations, and if you try and build on that site, it comes with some conditions. Number one, we wanted to hang on to the auditorium and the gym, like I've already stated, so we needed to include that in the build. And then DOE makes determination through the custodial process which buildings we can keep and which buildings we can do away with. In the early engineering drawings, they included doing away with building 15 so we could have a more cohesive campus, so we could have the buildings kind of on one end. It's for safety reasons. It's for safety reason and also you could have parking and deliveries on the other end. Building 15 had to stay in place, so essentially that campus would've been stretched from one end to the other. So that played a part into it and the safety issues that go along with that. But then we started drilling down into the cost and the cost to just demolish the buildings and abate the buildings that need to be demolished in conjunction with all the site prep that would've gone into that particular site to get it to the point where we could actually build a school there, just got higher and higher and higher. And for those reasons and a few others that I'm probably leaving out, we decided to, oh, I know what one is. Crescent City, City Council did a proclamation asking the school district to keep the gymnasium, the auditorium, and building one as they are as much as we could. So in other words, don't demolish them and just, if you do anything with them, just trying to refurbish them and keep them as they currently are. That just wasn't possible in the, again, in the site plans. We needed to have several more student stations in that location than that building would allow for, so. And there's oak trees, so there's, and there's an ordinance about oak trees down there. And there was lots of motivation just from the city council in general for us to find an alternative location just because when the school was originally built, it was a very different community and it's just not conducive for a school that would be that size today. So, you know, so many red flags, at some point you have to start, you know, just doing the math and looking around. So we found an opportunity that's in the form of a land acquisition at the corner of Union Avenue and, help me out, 308? 308. 63.3 acres. The price of it is less than the cost of just the demolition over at the Miller site. So we think it makes perfect sense. City, city water and sewer. It's plenty of room for needs for the 1,100-plus student station school and also it gives us an opportunity to grow. So for those reasons, we are wanting to move on this site and it's in the first phase and that school is scheduled to be completed in less than three years, so we need to get busy somewhere. But what we have brought before you tonight was that the purchase of the 63.3 acres so we can use that to build the Crescent City Elementary School.
And the property that the Miller site will be bifurcated and sold and will generate way more money than what we're paying for this other property and that money will go in a capital outlay that will be, allow us to not have to spend some bond money on other things or utilize that, so it's a win-win situation.
That is our hope.
Five acres over the south. South Park, so it's gonna be real desirable property.
Even if, even if we preserved a portion of that, it's so cost prohibitive to tear that property down, I think eight hundred something thousand dollars just to tear down the old school, to build a new school, so it's, it is, it is better and there may be some avenues to work with Crescent City on some of these internal properties, but I don't know if we can work that out. But what I liked about the property you're talking about to the new site is the fact that we've, years ago, a prior board approved over half a million dollars to run city water and sewage down there, so you've already got that. You've got, if, heaven forbid, something happened, you've got administration and law enforcement on Crescent City High School campus. If something happened on that campus, you could, you could intermingle law enforcement, guardians, whatever. There's a lot of positives to that situation, so I really like it, I do.
Well, Mr. Buckles, too, I think it just shows that we're truly trying to work with our, our local governments.
Absolutely.
And try to be cooperative and, you know, and the way things worked out, it was just more cost-effective, more reasonable to do what we're doing now. And without the demolition, this thing ought to be able to, well, we ought to be able to really accelerate the building of this.
Absolutely. And we're looking at special facility dollars. You'll notice soon what happens there and, you know, that's really neat to be able to utilize those funds instead of having to use the bond fund, so.
Things can really transform South Putnam in ways that we haven't ever seen before.
I'm tickled, I'm glad to see it.
And they're in the process now of doing, putting the POs together for the appraisals on the Miller Site property, so, you know, working with Mr. Spalding and everything, we'll have those properties listed pretty quickly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I vote that we approve item E6.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept, approve item E6 and second by Mr. Phil Leary. Question? Hearing none, we're ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay. Alrighty. We are now...
Did I hear seven or?
E7, I was just notified just to pull it, unless you want to expound on it.
No, we're mad.
Okay, all right, and that's why we didn't, okay. We are now in emergency session. We have two items before us.
Madam Chair, I guess I can make a motion for, I'm looking at item number one, would be the Interlocken High, I guess I'm looking at the right one. Interlocken High addition to June 2023 Summer Learning. Justification explanation is time-sensitive.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept item E1, no, L1, I'm sorry, L1 regarding Interlocken Junior Senior High addition to June 2023 Summer Learning. Justification time-sensitive, second by Mr. Phil Leary. All right, any questions? All right, hearing none, we're ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposing? Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve L2, the Palaca PK6 School Construction Manager that, that we...
I think they actually want, maybe one of...
Oh, oh, yeah, well, he...
You can approve it first.
Well, we can, we can do that and then do the second and under discussion, you can, you can, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take over.
No, you're fine. All right, we'll go ahead and do the approval and then...
I'll second, I'll second Mr. Leary's motion.
All right, Mr. Phil Leary offered a motion that we accept emergency item L2, new Palaca pre-K6 school, a construction manager, and second by Mr. David Buckles. Any questions? Hearing none, we're ready to...
Well, we'll have discussion.
I thought we were gonna have discussion.
Oh, I thought they just wanted to introduce.
And now you got the pressure on them if they don't, Travis. You got the pressure on them now, Phil, if they mess up and...
Yeah, we can withdraw our motion.
I was just thinking, they just gonna say hi.
Good afternoon, Board, this is Ozley Construction, Ken Ozley and Todd Duffy, and they wanted to introduce themselves.
Yeah.
He just did a great job of it. We really appreciate the moment and I just wanna, for Travis and all the staff, it was a very professional, very thorough process. We are so grateful to have the opportunity to be a part of the team that's gonna do this first school. And I will say, as a, as an Ocala boy, my burning memory of Putnam and Palaca as a young man watching John L. Williams and the Palaca Panthers just roll over Ocala for a size school. And it was my, our eventual alma mater, but, but it was the building of that, rebuilding of that school almost 20 years ago that got us into the business of building K-12 schools throughout this region and it's, it's been something that we've loved doing and we really look forward to working with all of you on this project.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you all so much. Nice meeting you and we look forward to working, working relationship with you. All right, so now...
Question on the motion?
All right.
We ready to vote?
Yes, sir. All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposing, hearing none, our motion carries five zero. We are now out of emergency session. We have no pending unfinished business and no new business, so at this time, we're ready for our board reports and we're gonna start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I just have a few things. I really enjoyed going to the top scholar awards. It's so rewarding to just see the success that was in that auditorium that night. Some of their degrees, I could barely even, their wanted degrees, I could barely even begin to comprehend what all they, they were gonna be able to do. I did particularly notice that everyone that mentioned an education, proposed field of study, Dr. Searcy was recruiting them on the stage, so that's a good thing. And then obviously, it's great that our superintendent reaches out to students to see exactly how they're feeling and I think he's to be commended for that. I don't know a lot of other school boards that do that and so I commend Dr. Searcy. And then, of course, we're just really, really hoping that everything cooperates with the weather for our graduations this week and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Mr. Buckles?
Well, I can tell you, we've got many, many more good things happening in our schools than not.
Amen.
I am so overwhelmed at the award ceremonies that I attended in the last week or two and, and of course, we've got graduations that we certainly pray everybody gets to and home safely and I guess we're headed tonight to Interlocken. So I, I'm very pleased on the workshop today. I think we gained some ground on the ideas for the insurance committee. There's no doubt that they, they're looking at ways to better serve our employees in a cost-effective fashion. I'm very pleased at the site selections and the drawings that Mr. Bowling went through and, and see the kids come up tonight and get some of the awards for being active and supporting their school and the other students with the superintendent is wonderful. So with that, I'm done.
Thank you so much, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Wagner?
I also very much appreciated the workshop today specifically on the insurance issues. That was a lot of information and like he said, we may have to start thinking in different ways to, to bring better services to our employees here in Putnam County, 'cause as you know, that's something I've, I've been looking at myself for some time, that, that just, I've had some concerns over what we can do better to serve our employees. I did want to point out, one of the items that we, that we approved today, the student readiness checklist, I just found that it was, it's a student-made checklist for other students as to items that you can use to say, am I ready for life in general? Am I ready for a career? Am I ready for college? And just a one-page condensed checklist that they can go, you know, have I done this? Have I thought about doing this? I thought it was very well put together and I look forward to seeing that distributed to students and I reached out and had some questions about that, in fact. So I was really, really impressed with the students putting that together. I also did attend the baccalaureate at First Baptist in Interlocken this past week. It was just a wonderful ceremony. Dr. Searcy was there as well and I was just very impressed with the number of students that came, the pride that you could just, it was palpable. They were, they were very proud of themselves, their family was obviously very proud and it was just a really, really good ceremony and I look forward to the others coming up. And I would just remind everybody, being that it's graduation, sometimes we only think of these things around prom, but to please drive careful. We've got a lot of rain and just coming down, I saw some very dangerous driving on 100 today and just remind your students, your children, to please drive carefully 'cause we want to see them through graduation.
Thank you, Mrs. Wagner. Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I would agree, the top scholars, I was so impressed and one of the things that just had to be heartwarming to anybody that was listening was the amount of community service each of those kids did and, in fact, I called Denise Bramlett at Feed the Need and told her, I don't know, probably at least 20, maybe more, said that they had worked with Feed the Need and it's just a lot of community service and they're doing a lot of good things and building a lot of goodwill. So I'm looking forward to the graduations and keep my fingers crossed it doesn't rain, but I do have my umbrella. And then also last week, I had the great opportunity to go to the CL Overturf Center. Dr. Coleman, kind of my guide, you know, we discussed all the federal programs, every department that's based there, I got to meet their, their department heads, Jan Azula and Andy Burnett, who I knew, and discuss, you know, ESE and, and, you know, STEM and all those different programs. And it was about three hours, but it was one of the most educational things that I've had the opportunity to participate in and, you know, kudos to Dr. Coleman, thank her very much for putting all that together for me and, you know, I'd encourage, if y'all haven't been there, the passion and the dedication of those, of the staff there was just, you know, un, it was unbelievable, actually overwhelming and, you know, we have a division that deals with homeless kids and the program they're doing, you know, we have almost 350 homeless kids in our school system and migrant worker, you know, students, I mean, just the whole gamut and the programs they're doing, the help they're giving those kids is just outstanding. That's it for me.
Thank you so much. Just real quick, ditto as well to the top scholars that were recognized. I didn't get to stay, but I read about it in the Palaca Daily News and that's the second item I want to mention, our partnership with Palaca Daily News. Usually you don't find that kind of relationship, especially in larger places, but our newspaper supports our students, cover our student athletes, our, just whatever is going on in the school district, they do an excellent job covering and we want to thank them for that support. And I got an opportunity along with Mr. Leary to be a part of the products of Putnam and to have been in this room and seen those older people. See, a lot of times, we think it's kids that get all giddy and excited about being recognized. You should've seen their chest stuck out, they really felt good that we are recognizing what they've done and we're saying thank you because you could've chosen to go and give your services anywhere else, but you chose to live in Putnam County and it was a grand time. And again, Palaca Daily News did an excellent job covering it, that full spray with the whole team. Thank you again for that Superintendent Searcy. And then I was fortunate enough to be a part of Putnam Virtual Graduation on last night. It was not virtual, but it was Putnam Virtual. We were here in the place, there were 10 students that graduated, seven of them were able to participate. It was beautiful. And again, you could see the nervous energy and the pride in themselves. I watched one young man and I thought, man, if he had some type of machine he was working, he would be working overtime, but he was pleased to have been a part of that. And this is just another opportunity, a way to afford education to a student that may not go that route that you and I have gone. And so Putnam County has a whole lot for everybody and we appreciate that. Final thing is by way of the board, at our last meeting, we talked about participating in the Veterans Day Parade and you all checked...
Memorial Day.
I mean Memorial Day, I'm sorry. Memorial Day Parade and we all said that we would. I haven't heard anything. Certainly would like for us to...
I haven't heard anything.
And I, and I haven't seen anything in the paper, if someone...
Is someone gonna have? Is someone going to have a parade?
They had a meeting, the, the paper I gave, they had a meeting, but the follow-up from the meeting, I hadn't heard.
Well, let's do this, let's direct the Superintendent's secretary to find out.
Would you find out for us, please? It is, so that's it. So if, if anything needs to be done, would you please make sure that we're part of it? And we know that we would be right in behind you, Superintendent Searcy, and all the others.
Sandy, if, if for some reason I can't come, and you need to line up a truck, I'll call and get you.
No, no, you, you're going to get us a truck, you promise.
I'll get you, I'll get you.
Wasn't that the conversation?
Yes, it was.
I said, I get the truck.
He's going to walk.
And you designated driver.
He's always told me what to do anyway.
All right, and so if you'll get us the time, Mrs. Michael, we would appreciate that because we, it, it's worth it, it is worth it. All right, that concludes mine. All right, Madam Attorney?
Yes, I just wanted to say one thing, as you all may be aware, there are social media lawsuits that are going on right now where school districts are suing the social media companies such as Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and some I probably haven't heard of, and we've received a few overtures from some firms that are representing, or that are taking on the social media companies, and we're, at this time, we're looking over, you know, some of those because there would be no financial commitment to the district to join one of those lawsuits. There's only financial upside to doing that if, if, if there's a, a successful outcome to those lawsuits, which obviously is by no means guaranteed, but as you all recall, we very recently received over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the Jewel lawsuit.
Yes.
So you never know.
Does it cover data that's been inappropriately taken, or?
Oh, it's about harms that are, that are alleged to have occurred upon students as a result of use of social media.
I got you, okay.
And so school districts have suffered damages allegedly.
I've heard about it, okay.
Yeah, there's a great article, it's in today's USA Today, I believe, and I put it on my Facebook page, but I'll email it to y'all by the U.S. Surgeon General, talking about the, the harm of social media and utilization of, you know, that, so that may be the.
I heard that report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. My turn?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mrs. Superintendent?
Just a few important timely announcements here, our design advisory committee applications are open for the first three projects, and the deadline for that, I believe, is June the first, and Serge, Jean, that's on our website.
Right.
Right. So again, anyone really that is in the areas of the schools, and it'll provide information, but we encourage people to be, to apply for that because that's how we're going to be able to really custom make a lot of these schools for the surrounding community. There are still spots available for summer camps, and again, go to our website for details if you want to keep those kids busy during the summer. Going back to graduation, we do have Plan A and Plan B for each school in case of bad weather for each graduation, and again, please check our website and our Facebook page for updates, and we're just watching the weather tonight, and we'll try to make a game time decision, and then we have another plan in case it doesn't work out. At the graduation, I, I do plan on, and we've kind of started this tradition over the last few years, highlighting our product of Putnam from each of the high schools, and that's going to be really a good message for those kids to hear, and also, we're going to be pointing out the six students in the crowd, six graduates in the crowd who really exemplify our Portrait of Graduate. So most of them don't know who they are yet, so we'll ask them to stand up and read a little bit about it, but I think it really goes to, I know Jonathan and his staff for Portrait of Graduate Week last week really did some activities to highlight how important it is for these graduates to have these competencies as they walk across the stage and be productive citizens in our community, so it's a very important aspect of our strategic plan that we're focusing on. Our Bond Oversight Committee has met twice, and actually Jared Dollar in back is our board chair, Jared, a committee chair, and is doing a great job, and tell you what, there, you can be proud of them, and each of you had a part in selecting them, but they asked some tough questions, and, which they should, and we, again, the point of that is, we want to make sure our bond, bond initiative is very transparent, everybody's questions are answered, and that's what we're here for. So I think it's going to be a great process, and they're asking for certain people to come, provide information, so we're trying to give them all the information they need to make sure that, they make sure this goes in the proper manner. Also, last thing, we started a process through Ashley's department, Ashley McCool, of doing podcasts every Wednesday. You might be getting these emails. I didn't know podcasts were that big a thing, but they are, I guess people listen to them on the way to work or something, but we've done principals, we've done, actually did a community member, I interviewed Carl Flag the other day, and his, his podcast is on there, and we now started interviewing students, and Jared's son Lance is in the crowd there. He's a junior at QI Roberts and had a great conversation. I've learned a lot about Lance and about all the stuff he does technology-wise and how he's really pouring into our community already. So again, this is a really informative way to find out what the, all the different groups in Putnam County are doing to make this such a great county, so don't get surprised if I call one or two of y'all to be on a, to get an interview for a podcast, so that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Is there anything else to come before the board? If not, we are adjourned.